There we are. Got it.
Hey, hear us now. Now, we're, uh, it's on there now.
We're good.
You got me now?
Yep.
Okay, so what we're doing is, uh, we're ahead approval for agenda. Um, we're voting around the table. It's your vote for approval.
I approve.
Okay, um, and then, Jimmy?
Yes.
You said yes? Okay, and I'm a yes. Um, okay, so approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion if everybody read through them.
I'm moving.
Second?
Second.
Brad?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, now we're on to discussion. Um, Cat, do you want to come up and?
Sure.
You can join us at the table?
Yep.
Well, now that I'm here, I'm realizing that I could have, um, printed this out again, but I think you guys have seen it. This is a scope of work that we drafted for this potential MPG application for Powell for identification of economic and industrial development sites. And, um, I haven't really been part of the conversation. I think it's been Jim, Jim Sullivan with us sat down and, and cranked this one out. And then, uh, my understanding is that he came up with this proposal because you guys have been talking with the select board about the need to identify some more commercial and industrial sites in town. And, you know, with all of his great planning experience, he said, you know, well, you could kind of, in a way, pick some names out of a hat and throw them on a map, or, you know, there's an alternate approach, which is to really try to have a structured, reasoned analysis way to do it. And there's a couple of advantages to that, you know, one being that it's the best, if you, if you have a structured, reasoned process to identify some sites, that gives you more assurance that the sites that you will identify will be, uh, really strong and will have the best potential to actually get developed, you know, because you're going to look at their access to infrastructure, their previous existing infrastructure, their, you know, what type of remediation at any given site based on its previous development would have to happen for it to be available for development. All kinds of stuff that actually plays into whether or not a site could be developed, you know, economically feasibly, you know, as a developer gonna dump a bunch of money into a site, there's gonna be some, some calculations there. So a more structured process would be likely to deliver you, you know, the best sites. Um, it would also help make sure that you don't miss a really good site because we'll take, you know, a broad look and go through a structured process. What are the pros and cons compared against each other? You don't want to miss a potentially great site because, you know, that an alternate approach might be a little bit more scattershot. Let's see, and then the third advantage to, to do in a, a more of a process is that it also reduces the risk of people hearing about it later and saying, well, was that a biased process? Why wasn't my property considered? I'd love to have, you know, commercial use on my property. Why wasn't I excluded? If you have a thorough identification process, then you can reply to that person and say, well, actually, we did look at the whole town and these are the factors that we weighed. And for example, your property live, you know, is way out in the middle of who knows where, and we, we actually looked at it and we realized that the cost to run the electrical power capacity that you would need to that site to power a, a real, you know, whatever it's gonna be, but an economic or an industrial site, you know, no developer's gonna pay to run power out there. And so you have a, you have a response and it's always, you know, people can always get upset and complain and you can't stop upset people from complaining if that's what they're gonna do, but you'll at least be really prepared to respond to any complaints, you know, with a reasoned way to say, well, you know, this, this is how we did what we did and we were really thoughtful about it. So those are the three advantages to do in a more in-depth process. Um, I can run back through the specifics of it because like I said, I'm realizing now I should have brought copies of this so we could all look at it together, but I, I just have it in hand.
A few copies of this if you want.
Sure. Well, now I have my notes on it. Maybe I'll, um, I'll send it around after because another thing is I'm, I'm here talking about it tonight. The MPG is, uh, the applications are due the first of November. And so I'll, I'll probably, if you guys decide that you do want to move forward on this, what we have right now that BCRC has worked on is the scope of work, you know, what is step by step, what we would see the process would be. At this point, we haven't gone beyond that because we weren't sure if you guys were interested. If you are, then we would go back and actually, you know, determine, well, what's, what would be the cost for a project like this? And we'd start to work on some of the application materials and come back to you guys next month because you do have to pass a resolution, a formal resolution to apply for the MPG, you guys, and then the select board as well. So tonight, tonight I just wanted to make sure that if you guys could give us the green light, then we'll do a little bit more homework and come back. So that's why I'm apologizing. I won't hand you this because I've scribbled all over it, but next time you could have it, this and, and a little bit more detail, cost information and, and that kind of stuff. Um, but I'm happy to run through it just really quickly, you know, with the work plan that we initially came up with is we'd, uh, sit down and confirm at the outside of any process, sit down with you guys, sit down with the select board, confirm what the scope and intent and timeline of the project is. The first step would be to prepare some base maps in Powell that are gonna have some of the critical information that we'd have to weigh to identify good quality sites. So what are the property boundaries? Uh, what's the infrastructure? Roads, railroad, electric, um, broadband and cell service, those are big. Available public water supply and wastewater disposal. Um, also the zoning districts, what's currently allowed and not allowed. Um, and we would highlight the parcels in particular that are already zoned for industrial and commercial uses, you know, the type of uses you guys are looking to highlight. And from that, we would come and work with you guys primarily to look at those big maps together, highlight the sites that, that make sense for further in-depth study, you know, what, based on when we can actually see what the resources are, where should we target for, for some in-depth study? Once we, um, and, and we would identify sites by different categories to make sure that you would have a diverse, uh, type of economic development sites that you're looking at. We've got, you know, existing or, or historic commercial industrial buildings and properties, like that's its own category. Can you, can those reasonably be brought back online? Those are gonna tend to be in places where there's existing infrastructure. That's the big reason that that is appealing is they're gonna, they're gonna have that. So a developer's gonna say, well, I don't need to run, you know, new lines necessarily to the site. So that's one category. Um, and then the other category would be the greenfield sites, places that don't historically have, have had that development, but for, you know, a range of reasons could be good sites for the future. Um, we would, once we've identified those sites, we would go through and make sure we document, um, for consideration what the ownership is, its appraised value as a property, the lot size and the address, the town plan and, uh, regulation policies, what's allowed, um, you know, all, all the stuff that plays into whether or not a site would actually be developed and how. The potential environmental constraints, um, like I said, are there gonna be any major state permitting issues based on where the site is or historic use of the property and remediation? Um, let's see, an in-depth assessment of the infrastructure, again, what, what does it have and what would it need to really accommodate, you know, modern economic industrial development? Um, and if there's any existing buildings or structures, what, what are those? Let's understand what's there, uh, what's usable, what's not usable. Um, so, so that's what we would do for the sites that we identified together. From there, um, we'd, uh, scope out, you know, not, not super in-depth, but kind of a high level, uh, potential development scenario for, for the sites that are, are looking kind of promising. If they're out of that, you know, exploring what could be done at the various sites, we could identify what would need to happen in terms of changes to the town plan or the regulations to make sure that those scenarios that we're talking about are actually possible for those sites. Um, obviously, you know, continue to meet with you guys throughout, uh, uh, from that, pick maybe a selection, probably not all, but a selection of what are, what are our really most viable sites? Let's focus on those. Um, because from there, we can drill down a little bit more and identify possible economic development assistance programs, like say there is a existing built site and it needs some remediation because of prior activity, you know, there's, I, I just heard there's more brownfield money coming down, um, that the state's putting in. So those kinds of things and, and we can actually tailor it to, that's because this what, is this is what that seat, this site would need to be developed. But there's other things too, the EDA. Then out of that, uh, BCRC would work with you guys to actually draft the language that would need to change in the town plan and then the regulations to bring those, um, online. And, uh, you know, put it all into a final report for you guys and for the select board. So that's, that's the scope of work that Jim Sullivan pulled together. It's, it's actually a pretty simple, straightforward project. We really like those because sometimes projects start to, well, can we also do this? This, this actually is a pretty night, nice, you know, tight, uh, scope that we wouldn't, you know, go, go beyond. Um, so, so we think it's a compelling project, but I wanted to hear from you guys what thoughts or questions or doubts you guys have.
Um, well, we've been talking here and I think we've come up with, I mean, originally right now, it's just like four sites that we've been looking at.
Yeah.
Those are, uh, I think I've just found out too, that at one of the ones was a farm area and it's, um, but it is not on, from what we checked into, uh, it's not in land trust. So that was still.
Okay.
Leaves that.
Is it in agricultural use? Did you check if it's in agricultural use?
Well, it is.
Yes.
No, but I mean, there's a, there's a program where they got a big tax break.
Yeah, that's, that's land use. That's, that's for the land use part. Yeah.
Okay, but that's not, that's not land trust. That's.
That's the, the current use program, the tax abatement program? Right, if they're registered with the state as, as ag, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I heard it's not.
Okay.
So that one would be a potential for that too, but, um, we do have four.
I have a question.
Deciding on or trying to come up with.
Okay.
Another question about that is, is, is that really how we want, uh, to have people come into Vermont? The property you're talking about, the agricultural property is right on the border of Vermont. And is that how we want Vermont to appear to people? As a great big, uh, trucking depot, the first thing as you come into Vermont?
Well, we don't know what it'll be. We're just designating land. So. Next, potential land.
I went on record last meeting as saying, I think that that particular piece of that land is a very bad idea.
Well, good. Can be, but we're just, but we still have to designate it.
To me.
We don't have to. I don't see the point.
Well, so I think, um, what, what a process could do that would, that might help in this type of a situation is, is really taking a, a, any given property off a map and putting it through several lenses, you know, like what are the advantages, what are the disadvantages of this site becoming commercial? And then there are gonna be, you know, basic land use questions and entry ways to the community that, that can be weighed if it's part of a, a structured process and we can demonstrate that all the sites that were considered, you know, we looked at them across all of these factors. And when we run them all through those filters, this, this is what the, what the output is. And, and again, the advantage is you're gonna end up with the sites that you end up with, you know, based on how you guys interpret your priorities and everything and interpret the town plan policies. And at the very least, at the end, you know, hopefully you guys can agree that you had a thorough process that reached what those sites were and nobody can walk in here and say, well, it was just scattershot and we, you know, we don't like it. And then that creates a whole headache for everybody.
Right.
That's what, you know, to me, it seems that it makes sense to do this for, for that reason, because we all come to the table with our own biases on, on, you know. I like that site. John likes that site. Megan prefers that, you know, to say a certain way.
Sure.
You have a different, you know, a different, uh, outlook on it.
And it may never, never get developed. We don't know.
Having it studied under a structured, structured, uh, method with somebody who's really doesn't have skin in the game.
Right.
And that, and that's not the only factor, right? Like there's all the other factors. There's what is that site's access to infrastructure and, and there's, you know, we can work together to figure out what are all the factors that actually play into, is it a good site or not? And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a list and it's not as simple as, well, it just has this, so it's great, or it just has that, so it's bad. It's really, we, you know, have to look through all of them.
Looking right at this. Well, Megan.
So would you be suggesting any other additional, um, sites?
Well, listening to her. Yes, what, what they're looking at doing, I think, is they're gonna review all potentials and then they'll bring them back to all the potentials that we have to sort through right field at that time too.
Right now, we're looking at probably the most promising, which is McMolding.
Right. That's, that would be a most promising one, yeah.
Has everything been in place. And then, you know, we go down to more or less undeveloped land that has had a history of manufacturing or doing something. The farmer's land, you know, is probably last, but, you know.
Hopefully.
But, but it's, well, it's okay.
As far as infrastructure goes, it's got the highway, it's got the railroad, it's got the river.
Yes.
It's got all the things.
Much to discuss.
Would there be, would there be any, um, I mean, it's a state road. Would there be any, 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 uh, input from the state about how they want to, the entryway to Vermont to appear?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, yeah, and that, that could be.
Yeah. Sure. There's a lot of, there'd be people complaining, there'll be all kinds of things going on. Neighbors not wanting a farm land to be, you know, you know, that's all there.
Right, but that's gonna be down the road. Just as a scenario, just say that got picked by somebody coming in, whoever it might be.
Well, you know, the state.
It would be assumed that they're gonna come to the boards.
What it really is. They passed a law back in the sixties about billboards. You can't have billboards by the highway for beautification, but now the state allows, um, solar fields right next to the highway. So there, there goes the beautification aspect.
Right.
Hey, as all aspects. Farm land, yeah, you're going through the things that, uh, that you've all been through.
Well, and I can say too, so, so what can come out of this? And I was just saying that the scope of this is nice because it's really specific and we don't want to start wandering off of, of this nice, clean scope. But at the same time, you know, something that could be an output of this is especially if you realize that some of the sites that are most advantageous are say, close to public roads and valued vistas in the community, a next stage in the process would be, okay, so strategically, those are sites that we want to at least make it, make it more flexible for certain kinds of commercial development to be there. What type of screening regulations do we need to have in place? How do we look at our screening regulations to make sure that, nobody wants a big, you know, kinda junkyard thing right on the border of the state, you know, that, that's not Powell and that's not what you're trying to necessarily advertise when people come here. You want to attract people to, to the beauty that is Powell. So how do you take advantage of advantageous sites? And I don't know anything about this site, you know, we don't have to make about this site in particular, but, but there, there is the reality that commercial sites are gonna be in proximity to existing infrastructure, like roads and whatever. So no matter where it goes, you want to make sure that your screening requirements are really, really tight. The good news there is that there's, you know, so many towns have worked on this. So there's a lot of good existing language around screening that you guys don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can identify that that's the need and.
We have some of that in the town plan, don't we?
Sure.
I'm sure you do, yeah.
Yeah.
Where the rubber really hits the road is in the regulations. And Jim, I know, just went through your regulations, so he knows them front and back. I don't, so I'm not remembering. You guys might know better, but we can look through what, what you guys have in, in the regulations for screening and if there's ways to improve it, we can, like I said, that would fall outside of the scope of this, but if, if this leads into a conversation about that, you know, and that, that wouldn't be as intensive because it's, there's a lot of existing language out there. We don't have to.
Right.
Reinvent something.
And that's one of the things I think is why we're having to work on this again is we just approved those, uh, new bylaws and we didn't really, we took out the, the industrial part of it. Um, that was taken out of, uh, from what we had before from, and so we're trying to, they still need that. They want, the, the select board wants it. So we're going back to put something.
Put some stuff back in. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the grant.
Right.
Yeah. That's what we asked to do and we're doing it.
That's it. Um, I mean, I, as far as that, I, I mean, we're, I think we're gonna have to do this anyways, where we're coming down to. Um, so, um, I think I, you know, I think at this point, we could, I would entertain a motion to, unless everybody else has any questions and stuff, um, as to approval or not, to, uh, I would, I would say it this way, I would make an approval to accept moving forward on this.
Well. I think the motion needs to be more specific than that. Uh, you know, I, like, we need to move that we, uh, that we ask the BCRC to move forward on this, getting this grant. What is the name of the grant again?
The Municipal Planning Grant.
Municipal Planning Grant, yeah. I mean, I, right, it needs to be specific. We can't just say go forward with this. That's too vague for a motion.
Are you, are you making that motion?
I move that we, uh, we move forward with BCRC on this municipal planning grant in order to, um, develop or find some, discover some sites that might be industrial, developed as industrial. Is that okay?
I would second that, if we're doing.
But is the specific focus purely industrial or?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Well, we, the way that, that, and like I said, I'm, I'm more on the outside of this so far. I'm getting pulled in now, but Jim's the, the one that initially looked at this and scoped it. He, to his thinking, I, I think he is thinking in terms of economic and industrial. And that's in light of the type of development that we're seeing happen in Vermont and revitalizing old properties, properties and new stuff coming in. Yes, there's industrial and it's also kind of more generally economic development, kind of like manufacturing. There's also, like mixed use is a big part of it. So that would be a big part of the conversation, you know, making sure that all of these things can be couched as mixed use because sometimes developers find it easy to not have to rely on just a commercial tenant or just a residential tenant. If you build a new building and it has residential units and commercial units, you can have temporary vacancies in either of those units, but your whole development doesn't fall to pieces. It's more dynamic, it's more sustainable over time. It's a better investment to have in the community that they can keep paying their property taxes and keep people in the community. So that's, so that's why we recommend it being not just industrial. Let's really talk about it as, you know, economic stimulus type sites. Yeah.
Okay, good. So, so then I move that we, uh, work with the BCRC to, um, on this municipal planning grant to, to develop, for, for economic development in our community.
Yeah, I'll second it again. When we get to the racetrack, it's gonna be a can of worms.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do mixed use there all day long. But, well, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's there and something's gonna happen to it someday. So this kind of fits the grant really good.
Yeah. And there's a lot of environmental constraints to that site as I'm sure you guys are super aware. So right, that's, that's one of these various filters that we'll, we'll look at sites through and, and then you get to have a approaching, you know, real objective assessment of, of the site, you know, just look at the facts, what's, what's going on there, you know?
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Can you repeat the motion back to me so we?
Oop, pop quiz.
Just so we can get it. I mean, we should all work on it to get, no, I mean.
You wanted economic stimulus and, and economic development and industrial to work with BCRC?
I move that we, um, go ahead with BCRC to develop, to work on this municipal planning grant for economic development in Powell. Is that simple enough?
Yeah. We, we got it.
We got it.
All right, Brad?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Great. Okay. Thank you, guys. And I realized too, I just launched into this whole thing and I know, I know I know a number of you, but I don't know everybody. So I'm Cat Briers. I'm, what am I now? I'm the Director of Planning at BCRC. So I've been at BCRC for like five years now. I, I helped at some point, uh, not in this recent, uh, bylaw update, obviously, but in the last one, I, I was down here a little bit. So that's why I know a couple of you guys, but not everybody. So, um, I'll be back. Jermaine?
Jim Winchester.
Jim Winchester.
Yeah.
I'm John Bashir.
Fred Miller.
Fred Miller.
Ron Bizzetta.
Ron.
And Megan Randall.
Megan. Okay, great. So nice to meet the ones of you I didn't, I hadn't gotten to meet yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
And I'll plan to be here next month and then we'll have, um, because we do have to actually sign a resolution and that kind of stuff. So that's what we'll do next time.
Okay, and if you could get a, yeah, like I said, a copy to her so we can get a, get a copy of that ourselves.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. And I guess I'll write you.
Sounds good. Nice to meet you.
So I have another.
Thank you for coming.
I thought that, uh, the, I thought the select board has said that we would be wearing masks in the office. What happened with that?
I never heard. I have no idea.
I'll tell some.
Well, I'm glad I didn't show up.
They also said if you're not comfortable, you can stay home and meet by Zoom. I do remember that part. I see, I see you've done that, so.
I think you guys are all breaking the rules here.
Breaking the rules.
Jimmy, I hope you stay healthy.
Well, I've been healthy for 85 years.
I think we are.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving.
More than me.
So we're gonna go on to, uh, the discussion of designated village industrial, even though I think we just kinda went over some of that. I don't think we really need to do a whole lot to that. That was kind of all.
Yeah.
Into one.
We did it.
Um, and then, uh, they got down for industrial land use bylaws. Um, I think.
I think that becomes a move.
I was thinking of just letting that one right now roll off here.
Wait till we have something to work with.
Right.
Yeah, once we come back, we're, we're not gonna be able to put them together. So, um, I think we'll move on to number six, which is, uh, the discussion on expanded rail service.
Yeah, so, uh, did everyone get a chance to read that article? Did anyone? Did you get a chance to read it?
I scanned through it.
Yeah, so it's, it's old news, right, Jimmy? You've heard this before, that people are wanting to get rail service back to Powell and back to Albany, back, you know, from Boston to, uh, North Adams. It's been around, this, this.
Been around for a long time.
Is it a lot of people in Powell? A lot of people in Powell want to do that? Or is it a lot of people from other places want to come through Powell?
First off, there's a railroad wanting to do it. They're, you know, I know those racetrack owners, every one of them. And the racetrack doesn't really talk to anybody. They just do things.
Right.
And obviously, they don't want anybody in the racetrack because it's, uh, they don't like entertainment venues, okay? That's, that's why they closed up the North Gate. The original owners came here from Boston and they dealt with the Boston and Maine. And they were well-connected in Boston, uh, and they got along with them. And it cost them about 6,000 per whatever. So when that racetrack sold to another individual and another individual, they didn't deal with the racetrack, I mean, with the railroad. So the railroad shut them down. And, uh, there it is, the nonsense is there. But I'm glad you're talking about them. I'm glad you're talking about the railroad because, uh, there used to be two sets of tracks going.
Right.
And you could store stuff at McMolding, you could store stuff at, uh, the Tannery. They had side rails. They'd bring in heights and whatever. But there's, there's new owners now there.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, it's a very lucrative, well, who's the tunnel that makes it four hours shorter? It's a very lucrative, but we got two major corporations in Powell, okay? We got six and a half miles. We got six and a half miles of railroad, we got six and a half miles of river, which isn't being used. We should talk more about the river. But we have a landlord at the racetrack, Mr. Sellers, that doesn't want to communicate with anybody.
Okay, but leaving the racetrack aside, Jimmy, which I know is hard for you.
Yeah, it's hard for me.
This initiative, okay, let me just explain, this initiative is coming out of Massachusetts, the Department of Transportation in Massachusetts.
Right.
It's, what's her name? Michaela Niles, who's the project manager for the Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study. So it's only a study. But she suggested at this meeting, there, she called on political leaders to build an alliance. So what I'm saying is, could we get our political leaders, suppose, in the select board, and could we, the planning commission, get, just give our verbal, you know, just to say, we think this is a good idea. Maybe if people got together from more than one state and, you know, worked together on something like this, there, I think it would bring a lot to Powell to have a railroad station, where you could go straight into Albany and then to New York? That'd be great. Make it a little easier for me. I'm always picking people up in Albany, you know, or Boston, yeah. When you have kids, and they're all spread all over the country, you're picking them up all over heck and gone, and I think...
It's a good idea. I'm not against it. You used to have two railroads.
It's just a study.
Well, we understand it.
All I'm saying is, can we get behind it? Can we let her know?
You got somebody in the railroad you can talk with?
I don't have anybody. I hope that the project manager...
I've known the owners of the racetrack go to Boston. Bill Ricker, bring the lawyers with them. I can name them all, they spend four hours and come home empty, wasting time. So, you know, if you can talk to somebody in the railroad, God love you.
Well, I'm not going to, but I'm hoping that this person, Michaela Niles, Michaela Niles, from the Massachusetts State Department of Transportation, might have some conversation with them.
That'd be great.
Maybe just say, oh, heck with you. But they might also be interested if she shows a, some backing out in the communities that would be served.
We'd love it.
So that's what I'm asking, can we be one of the communities that is served? And can we get our backing?
Sure. Nothing wrong with it.
Can we ask?
They already took half the tracks out.
For me, yeah. You know?
They took half of them out.
Yeah, they took, they took the second railroad tracks out. So what I said before, you know, was back 50, 60 years ago, and...
So it might be...
Well, they've removed those things. You know, there used to be a pod car from Boston come up to the track, and people loved it.
I think if it's something you want to reach out to her and find out about, you could do that.
I did reach out to her.
Good.
I did, and she, you know, it's just in the planning stages, and we are on the mailing list. What I would like is if the select board could, you know, just say, sure, study it. We think it's a good thing to study. It's really, it's just a study at this point.
Well, actually, they're making a museum, a railroad museum in North Adams.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is, the Hoozie Tunnel is an historic place.
Sure.
Well, North Adams is on to it. I mean, you know...
Yeah, we need to be on to it, too.
Well, we can.
Cut off our nose and just...
No, no, who's against it?
Well, then, why don't we say we're for it?
Why don't we make a motion? Make a motion, I'll second it.
I move that we ask the select board to give their imprimatur to this project, the Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study.
To give their what to this project?
To give, to show...
Blessing, I thought she said.
Blessing?
Imprimatur. You know, to sign their name, sign off and say, we like this idea. We would like, we would like to have a station in Powell.
I understand it's just a study, but I think they're probably going to want more information before they just sign off on things like that, so if just saying, we would like to send our, send to them.
We could argue about where to put the station.
If you've got a group of people in New York, and you've got a group of people in Massachusetts that want to come together, but they need Powell...
To do it.
To make it happen for them, something should be in it for Powell.
Yeah.
It happened in the 1850s, when they put the railroad through, they drilled the Hoozie Tunnel at the same time, because New York and Massachusetts were working together. I don't know if Powell got anything out of that deal, but...
Probably not, because Powell, there's no everything.
A lot of chemicals coming through them.
As long as it's not a big cost.
Yeah.
But that's a good idea, let the select man in.
All right, I will send, I will forward that article to the select board and ask...
Yeah, I would say just forward it, I don't think it's something we got to vote on. It's just going to, just forward it to them and let them see.
It's good, it's good.
I know it's been around, I know that guy in the historical society's been nattering on about it for years, but I still, I think it'd be a great thing for Powell.
I prefer, I would prefer to hop a train and to go to Albany to get on an airplane, but I don't think, I don't know if it can get me that far.
Yeah, I mean, I drive into Albany all the time.
You ain't going to get you fast at Burlington, it's only single track there.
Yeah, it's only a single track, so.
Powell has the history.
Does that mean you can't get back?
No, 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 no.
It's one way, is that what you're telling me?
These people in Powell, the train only goes one way at a time. It goes only one track. You understand, Powell...
Powell only has one track.
Okay? There was no, there was no school in Powell, no high school, okay? So back in the day, certain people lived down, got on the train, and they went to Williamstown, okay? And people in North Powell got on the train and went to Hoosier Falls, and then the trolley went up to Pennington, the Catholic school die. So you've got a bunch of people here that grew up with the railroad, and they know a lot about it. And there was two train stations, one in North Powell, one down to the Sawmill. So there's a lot of people in Powell are sentimental to the railroad, understand it. The railroad left us, we didn't leave Burlington.
Sure, no, they're trying to, what I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, if we show that there's political will...
We would do it, if there's something in it for Powell.
Other than a big cost.
Yeah.
And plus, you've got to think of all the people who are living by the tracks, who at four o'clock in the morning now are hearing the whistle blast, when nobody's at the intersection, but they got to blast some horns.
And they got the track.
Well, that's already happened.
But let's increase that, though, right?
Yeah, it's going to get more, it might get more traffic.
I'm just, I'm just making a counter, a counterpoint.
There's people who would not be happy with it. Let's put it this way, I don't think the trailer park people would be happy with it.
They may not.
They were about three feet from the goddamn railroad. Anyway, it's a good idea. Anything that helps Powell is a good idea, until somebody stands up and says, I don't think it's a good idea. Anyway, it's just me.
Okay.
It's a thought.
It's a thought.
Okay, moving on, and is there any public comment? Nobody on there? Okay, so no public comment, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Please do. Motion.
A second?
Second.
And vote.
Aye.
Megan's an aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.